Okay, I'd like to call to order the Maplewood Budget Work Session. Thursday, June 4th. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, if you're on this present.
Okay, and we don't need to make a motion to excuse anyone?
No.
Okay. So, we'll start in with a review of the half set. Capital improvements account.
Sure. All right, did everyone got that out? There's um. The main change in this or the biggest items are just the sheer number of of items we've. Shifted over in from the general fund into the capital improvement account. And and obviously your roads are always your your streets, street construction are always your your biggest item within this um account. We also have the Greenwood Railroad Railroad Crossing. I put $500,000 in there. I got that number from the. Railroad consultant from government that spoke with us probably back in November. And he said that it would probably be less, but to be safe to put $500,000 into it. And so that's where I got that number from. Hopefully it would be done within this this fiscal year. Even if we started moving forward with it, if you remember, he he made the comment that the nothing. Railroad related works. With any type of speed whatsoever. And then we've also got. We moved. Items 70150 with City Hall improvements, we moved. 51,000 into the 40 account, which is the. Prop P account, because a lot of those improvements are going to be more police related. And they've got a healthy fund balance over 400,000. So we we did that as well. But you can see a lot of these items are moved, which when you see our operating budget spreadsheet, you can see when we get to it. We've actually been able to balance the general fund for the first time in many years. And so that's why we did. And this account has about a $2 million fund balance right now. So we're fine. We bring in about 13 or 14 each year within this account.
Anthony, would it be possible? Of the fund balances right now so that, I mean, not second, but in the next couple of days so that we sort of look at that against. What we're spending in those funds over what we're bringing in.
Absolutely. And then when we go, when we go through them, keep in mind for. Some accounts, for example, and Karen can probably tell you the dates, you know, some may be a little little lower than than others. Talking real estate taxes coming in. You know sewer laterals, so you know, we get that in roughly around in December. So it might look a little, but we hope no more is coming. But we can absolutely do that, councilmember.
Thank you.
Please keep in mind that we work a month behind. So anything you would see right now would probably be. It'd be through April, for you know, things for me still trickle in. In early, early weeks.
Yeah, no, and that's fine. I know it it won't be exact. It'll just be more recent than the CAFR, I guess, whatever's in there. So. More helpful to have sort of a general idea.
And some some big ticket items like this account with a purchase order, we may have the entire, you know. Mountain Cumbered for the entire street project, you know, which may not be done until. October, but we basically showing that as money that's not available.
Right, sure. Okay, thank you.
Um, I know. One thing that I added for councilmember Phillips. I want to thank her for bringing it to my attention. The we put in EV charging station. I threw in $2,500. We believe we can get a grant for that, and we're going to try to get a grant for that. But I threw a matching portion just in case we need it. And we're thinking about putting this within the business district. And we're looking for possible locations. We have the conduit. Already set from our Marietta Park or parking lot renovation. We did, you know, I if I had to guess, maybe nine years ago. And we we planned for that. But there's also some thoughts about possibly putting it on Manchester somewhere, assuming the businesses are fine with that. But. I wanted to make sure councilmember Phillips saw that we had that in there because I said we were going to put that in. And we just talked about that last week. There's quite a few. Up upgrades to. We have got some pricey items for server upgrades, but these are very old, very antiquated servers. We need to work on that. We've got a front loader in there, which is used a lot of times for salt, a street work and sewer laterals as well. It's our front loader is basically been an operable now for. Going on about nine months. It was just too much to fix it. It's probably 30 to 35 years old. Of the one we're replacing. And the street sweeper. That's the one we we previously paid for or purchased. And we've actually received this. You guys bought this back in November. We're just putting the payments in there. I've got one other thing. I put the business and resident survey in there as well. Because I know we talked about post, you know, postponing that. So whenever the council wants to move forward with that. Just give me the the go ahead and and we can do that. I've contacted all the firms that submitted and just told them we're kind of in a holding pattern and they all understood. But if you guys decide, hey, you want to, we can at least get this going.
I just got a question about that.
I'm sorry. Yes, Eleanor, go ahead.
Were we also going to ask them if they would be able to split out the business and the resident survey like two line items that we could. Initiate at different times if needed?
I thought you guys talked about that, but that was decided. I thought that the discussion was. All the businesses right now would only be worried about COVID. You know, that would be their primary concern. And that's why I thought you guys decided to hold both back, but I didn't know we were still wanting to split it, but we can absolutely do that if that's what you'd like.
I can go back to my notes. I I thought that we still wanted to find out some information that we were. There was something we were going to ask them and get information back, but.
Whatever, whatever the council wants, just let me know and I'll make it happen. We can maybe bring it up under council communication on Tuesday if that's if that works, councilmember Pardini.
Sure. So and is it safe to assume that that we have a? Fund reserve for the half cent capital improvement fund?
Yes. It's like 2 million anywhere, you know, just depends. It floats anywhere from 18 to 21.
Um, I noted, so there's a line item reference 7,000 and the last page is 26,000 because it includes redevelopment of the city's website. Then on. A different page, it just shows the 10,000. So I didn't know. I couldn't find the, I couldn't find the like. The chart reference to 7,000. So I didn't know if it was factored in. Sorry, I don't know the technical term.
Couldn't find it either, Jenny. I would.
Okay.
As well. So I know what you're talking about. I just don't know where it is.
It's um. On the actual sheet, it's 70001. It's on the very bottom under capital out.
Okay, on the last.
Very last, on the accounts page, it's the very last. In. Finance director Karen Dilber will probably tweak those and finalize those. Basically, it's capital out. Karen, do you want to explain how you assign those?
Um, well. I'm still working on cleaning this up. Most of these numbers come directly from RGL. However, Sun and some of these don't. And they've kind of just followed the budget through the years. Not really sure where they came from, and I'm. Trying to get that squared away before we get the final budget document out, so.
What's a GL?
General Ledger. So in most cases, when you see like this number 70015, theoretically, that would correspond to our general ledger, the. Last five digits, this account is 24 and then 0000 is the middle section. And then the last five is like the type of purchase. So the 7,000 accounts are typically capital outlay. Or 40,000 accounts is personnel, 50,000 is like a commodity, 60,000 is services, and 70,000 is typically capital outlay.
Yeah, and I I still don't see it. Karen, did you find out yours?
I saw the the 7001 where it says 78,500.
Okay, that's the.
Very bottom of.
76,500 or 78?
Wait a minute. I I see 765 is what.
Okay, yeah, you said 78. I want to make sure we had the same number.
Those numbers that you and I, the changes we made the other day, they didn't stick to this one. So I'll I'll update that formula.
Needs to be, needs to be 230500, I believe, right?
Yes.
It's on the some, it's on the actual page, but not that. But we'll get that cleaned up.
Okay. We did attempt to fix it the other day. For whatever reason, it just didn't stick, so.
Gotcha. Okay, so I'm not crazy. I mean, a little bit, but.
No.
Fair enough.
So Anthony, sorry, just to ask, so you said we usually bring in 13 or 14? And some floats at 18 or 2 between 18 and 21?
And that what is between 18?
I thought you said then something floats between 18.
Our our fun, it doesn't always, it doesn't right now, but. Early on in the budgeting process, we had around $2.1 million in this account, and it may be down to around 18. Because you you were wondering what the fund balance is. And I said.
Okay.
Kind of floats that way. And right now the balance will be obviously drawn on because of the. Summer street projects. And then it kind of rebuilds. In the off season, where we're not making as many purchases.
Okay, because so like. Because we're projecting to bring in 165 and spend 189? Is that?
Oh, we're projecting to spend about, yeah, roughly about 1, 1.9 million and we'll bring in about 13 or 14. But our fund balance is probably around around 2 million.
Yeah, as of the end of May, our fund balance in that account is 2,218,789.
And then in addition to that, we'll bring in another 13 or 14 during the fiscal year.
And. Okay, I have a general question about sales tax, but we can wait till we get to the out of the. Capital improvement more into the revenues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. And I knew Karen was going to make me look bad because I said it usually flows between 18 and 21, and she said we had 22. But I'd rather have that than 17 or 16.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions with regards to the? The half cent. Capital improvements?
And just one other question, one last question. And this, I think. We've asked this last time, but these these moves. From the general fund, these are like permanent moves, right?
Yes, I mean, but and it kind of fluctuates. I mean, my my principal concern right now. We've been borrowing a lot out of the general fund. And so. The the moves we've made in the parks and and Stormwater Capital. I mentioned. Because we have this large ticket item, this potential half million dollar item in the railroad, I threw some curb and gutters. Which carries stormwater into that account, where that one probably will come back into this 2,400 account from the 28. And um, you know, eventually, hopefully, we we can slowly build our general revenue fund back up and and it and it. And we may decide at that point, you know, our general revenue funds is in pretty good shape. Let's knock out some more roads, you know, because obviously that's a major priority amongst residents. And. So, you know, for the first, for the near future, I would say yes, but that doesn't mean, you know, within, you know. Within the future, we wouldn't change that mix.
Okay. That's super helpful. Thank you.
I I remember with that, again, we talked about that park capital. Those will probably stay like that because we're we're paying our pool off fortunately in June of. 2021, I'll be an extra $405,000 worth of revenue each year.
And if the expenses that we moved from the general fund to this fund, you know, if if for some reason we need to stay. Need them to stay there, it's not inappropriate to leave them there. The state statute says that we can charge anything that's a capital item and the maintenance to maintain it. To this fund, to this account. So it's not inappropriate to leave it there, but um, you know, we can always move it back to the general fund. If, you know, roads become a priority and that fund has a healthy balance, so.
The general fund is obviously the one with the least amount of restrictions, and that's why it's always, you know, hurting. A lot of these capital accounts are marked. You can only buy, you know, you can only pay for certain items. A little more restrictive.
Okay, is the next step to move on to the general fund?
I thought we got revenues next.
Okay.
I'm excited to say, and we talked earlier, if you if you look at our. Look at our general fund balance, it's going to be balanced for the first time in a long time. You know, Karen and I. About that early on, we said we'd get there and not much difference. We had expenses of 800. Or pardon me, 8,713,754 dollars and our revenues are 8,720 dollars and 50. That's just for the general revenue. What you what you're seeing on this sheet that I hate, I sent out on. Believe it was Monday. We did not put the fire sales tax in there. So our fire sales will be bumped up. We're going to add an additional $200,000 worth of revenue this year. Because even though the fire sales tax is passed, so it's going to go from 650, which is what you see under the 2020, 2021 estimate to 850. And um. We do not anticipate seeing any revenue probably until this or January. And that's, that's why that figures. Only going to be 200,000. Every department within the general fund. Saw a reduction. When you're looking at our revenues, it's not a. It's not an assessment year, so we basically kept all the property tax information the same. Karen and I talked about the COVID issues and the and so the local use tax, you'll notice jumped up a little bit. That has to do with internet sales. Our sales tax. We basically kept the same. We add, we went 33 to 34. Again, we feel very fortunate due to the nature of our retail that we're in pretty darn good shape compared to most cities. See if I see any other major jumps. Court, we've got court is obviously down. And if I if I have, if I have any that I'm not convinced is is gonna. It maybe is a little inaccurate. It may be court, I believe. If anything, it may go down a little further. But we are conservative in other figures, so we still, we're still confident in our. Overall number. We moved all fines, all traffic tickets, everything down. And court right now, I mean, I I don't know if municipal court operations are going to start until now I'm hearing August as opposed to to July. So you just, we just don't know. Karen, am I missing any other highlights in this that you want to, or you want to add anything to that, what I said?
I don't think so. We covered the the business licenses. They're just going to pay them later, correct?
Yes, the full amount.
Yeah. People been. Getting building permits and stuff like that like crazy online. They've been doing the online payments. They did that through April. They did that through May. So. They're doing the work on their house. So we're seeing the revenue. They're just, you know. Not, there's not a lot of foot traffic at City Hall. So they've still managed to, we've still managed to to see revenue from that because people are still doing it. Otherwise, really, everything we, you know, the revenues, we we've always been conservative on our revenues. So, you know, that that's a trend again this year. But like Anthony said, the the option, the local option, those are the internet sales that those we did see a really large increase in those. So I don't think we'll see a huge increase over time, but I think that, you know, it'll probably level off eventually, but. You know, I think it'll stay high for a little bit. I mean, I don't plan on heading out to the grocery store anytime soon. I've. Kind of grown accustomed to having my groceries delivered.
Yeah. My fear with with sales tax and it's and it has not shown out, but in the future is, I mean, I'll. I think anyone that's purchased stuff online knows how easy it is. My fear is that you get a lot of people that were were were, you know, sheltered at home and then they ended up, you know, discovering Amazon or. Buying online as opposed to, you know, driving up to Walmart. And and I, you know, I know that that that's kind of a a national concern. But again, we all talked about our sales tax numbers for April, and that trend really didn't play out. So. Hopefully, I'm just worrying for nothing. Gasoline, we took that down a little bit. That was another one we talked about because working from home, we believe that's probably wild. But yeah, I think I think we're definitely comfortable with these numbers. Does anyone have any, you know, questions, comments or concerns on any of our number?
I have a general question regarding estimates for this year since we're so close, I mean, relatively close to the end of the fiscal year. Are the estimates updated with our current information for this year's revenues?
You're.
That's. Go ahead, Anthony.
No, I I just want to make sure you're talking about 1920.
Yeah.
No, Karen, when you don't get those out till, so you basically close out the year. When do you do that again?
Yeah, so that's a kind of a tricky question. We do update them month by month as we go. For everything we receive in that month. So everything I'm going to get in June is for the month of May. There are some people who report quarterly, like the charter, they do their franchise fee quarterly, so we won't see anything like that until June. But. The closeout at the end of the year, and I I spoke with councilmembers Pardini and Schmidt about our CAFR. We have a 60 day window from the end of our fiscal year, so from June 30th to accrue back any real estate and property taxes that we receive. So. Those numbers aren't really accurate until we close out the fiscal year. So to answer your question, yes, the stuff that we can update at the time, we do update. It's always in arrears. But, you know, there are certain things we can't really do until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure I'm getting, I'm we're answering your question correctly. The numbers you're seeing. Are not updated. Those those are the numbers we budgeted last year.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Karen has, Karen has separate. She has a separate program, which we basically pull that out when we're doing our estimates. We compare to see where we are to make sure we're not off on one before we put these in. Council.
Okay, so then it's because that information isn't updated in this file, it's really hard for us to judge. If the 2020 number is. I mean, because relatively speaking, the actuals from 1819 to the 1920 estimate. You know, some of those numbers seem vastly different. So that's kind of where I'm I'm looking at those differences and wondering, okay, well, you know, why were they vastly different and and what's the result of that? And then why in turn, you know, did the 20? 2021 numbers either go up or down?
What are you referring to specifically?
I mean, just the first one that I'm looking at is the, under the licenses and permits for manufacturers. I mean, we had, you know, two years of less than. You know, 33, 34,000 or 36,000, and then it jumped up to 75. So.
Anthony, do you know about manufacturers licensing? I'm sorry, I'm not familiar enough with the business licensing process to know if maybe, you know, there was something new added or.
Most of that has to do with Sun and is is one and and I can't remember what their projections were, but. They're on right now. And so. They're our biggest manufacturer. Most of our other ones are much smaller where they don't gross mechanical one out. We we.
Does Schlafly fall under that category also?
Portion of theirs does, but our biggest one hands down is Sun and. That's where we're at. And so it just depends on what sort of orders they're doing. And so we, that's where we're at with that. If you go back prior years, you've probably seen it above. You go to 1617, there's 63.
Right, yeah, it's something, it seems like it fluctuates wildly, so I was kind of curious about that.
It really does because of the nature of the items they bring in. I mean, they really do. They they do fluctuate. It's difficult to tell. It depends on when their releases are, if it's within that fiscal year. So you can quite a bit higher. Trying to think of some other ones you might be concerned about. And we believe our building and construction will probably be a little higher. I mean. For the most part, we're conservative enough on our numbers, councilmember Phillips, that. You know, even if one's a little short, something else will make up the difference on on our revenue.
What's happening right now at the state level on the cable franchise fees?
They're trying to, trying to get a a deal in there. I ended up lowering it 4,000 because. My concern is their their lobbying, the state try to basically cut what they pay us significantly. I don't have a a recent update, but that is a concern, and that's why I lowered. You see cable franchise. Went from 75 to 55 to 51 to 42 to 8. It's because of their lobbying efforts. Try to not have to pay us much money. And that's why I've lowered that because I'm I'm concerned that it may be successful.
Are there other utility taxes that? Are going to be affected also?
You know, we discussed that and, you know, so for example, people that are typically going off to work. It's hard to predict, you know, for the businesses that that, you know, that that have been affected by the. By the COVID situation. Maybe they were deemed nonessential. You know, obviously, they're not using electricity and some other other utilities, but. But at the same time, there are a lot of people that didn't work from home that are now. So we just kept those pretty flat. Again, it's kind of an unusual situation, but we figure we're we're predicting it's going to be essentially a wash for those reasons.
And, you know, if. I I don't know where the Wayfair tax is right now, but, you know, if they offset the internet sales tax with income tax. Will come out ahead. We don't.
I don't have a lot of faith in that, unfortunately. Well, that doesn't mean it's not going to happen in the future. I believe it will, but at least in the near future.
It'd be nice if it wasn't a zero sum game for them, but. But, you know, yeah, I don't know when anything's going to happen there because that would, that would affect our.
Absolutely.
Sales tax dramatically. Okay.
Go ahead, Eleanor.
I was going to ask about. Sales tax and then also the merchants and service license and permit. I know that we're talking about that our April numbers. Sales tax looked. Or or up in some cases and that just the the nature of our businesses. Means we won't, maybe won't see as big a sales tax dip as other areas are projecting. means we won't, maybe won't see as big a sales tax dip as other areas are projecting. But I'm wondering if, what you all think about how sales, like as we progress into this year, as CARES Act money runs out, as people, you know, if unemployment, it starts to take, you know, another has some big climbs later in the summer and into the rest of the year. It, or if, you know, if some of our businesses don't make it, if either of those numbers would be.
Well, again, it's, it's kind of, again, a lot of times you're predicting, projecting revenues, it's a guess. But you're, you're trying to use empirical evidence. You're trying to look at trends and one trend is, is even if the residents or pardon me, the restaurants, you know, we know the Dubliners not making it, some other ones aren't making it. But on the flip side, those people are still eating at home and they're shopping at stores with a grocery component. The grocery component is key, um, they say during economic downturns. And four of our principal retailers all do have a major grocery component. And those four retailers would be Sam's, Walmart, Aldi's and Schnucks. So, um, again, I, I just actually had a luncheon with, um, a number of city managers. We actually had a park meeting where we actually outside last night and we talked revenues and we talked shop. And Maplewood is, I mean, we are doing, fortunately, just because of the nature of retail, we are doing much better than most other cities. Just because even if there is a downturn, a lot of our businesses are essentially equipped for downturns with the grocery component. We talked Lowe's was up. Thought we said sixty, in the sixty, sixty seven percent, if they probably did their best year ever last year. And, um, but we don't believe that's going to happen again because we think a lot of people got stimulus checks. A lot of people were at home and they were gung ho to get some, some work done when they had some downtime. And we don't anticipate, we, we anticipate Lowe's is going to level off. But even Walmart, our principal source of, uh, sales tax, I think it's roughly twenty four, twenty five percent. Walmarts do well in recessions. Because they're essentially a, a discount retailer.
The license and permits, you don't expect to change much or?
No, we believe that some are going to go down and some are going to go up. We were seventeen percent up in April. We don't, and we're, we're project, basically projecting flat. So we do believe it will go down due to economic downturns. And so I, you know, I, and but we figure that it's not going to drop below seventeen percent of where we were in April. Karen, do you want to add anything to that that?
Well, so the, the companies that Anthony's referring to, their licenses, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're based on gross receipts, gross sales.
Yes, the, the merchants and manufacturers are based on gross sales.
So.
Is, are based on square footage service.
So the smaller ones that are based on square footage, or even the smaller ones that are based on gross receipts, those, we do anticipate those going down because they're, they're smaller. They, you know, they haven't probably fared as well during, during the COVID and potential economic ensuing economic downturn. However, the ones that Anthony mentioned, they're going to be up. So they're more likely going to offset what we won't see from, um, the smaller ones. And if I could, this sort of ties into Councilmember, Member Phillips' question about, um, why the column just to the left is budgeted items. Um, so merchant manufacturers licenses, Karen Scheit sends those out June first. So this budget has to be in place by July first. So I don't really, I won't have those numbers until maybe June thirtieth, um, which is well past when we have to have this budget in place. So that's why that column is the budgeted numbers as opposed to actual, because there is a timing fluctuation. The, the last revenue data I have for the merchant manufacturers line item is last July of two thousand nineteen. And then there's no activity again until June. So, um, you know, we don't really have anything to compare it to, which is why you see actual for the, the previous years, but you just don't see it for the current fiscal year. So.
And, and when you're talking about revenues, we talk about fluctuations and you can have wild fluctuations in, in property taxes. If say a Sunen manufacturing decides to protest their taxes, you may, you may see a significant dip and wonder why. And then you can, you can, we can explore further into that. And so if they're paying it or they're, they're protesting their taxes or challenging it, there could be a significant delay. Same thing with businesses, a lot of them, um, don't pay on time. It's a constant battle to get businesses to pay on time. And so we sometimes will receive a lot of the money from the prior fiscal year well into the following fiscal year. Just because people don't pay all the time like they should.
When I, I had a question about real property taxes. So are those commercial property taxes or they are residential? And I guess either way, assessments went up last year, right? So I guess I was curious, it's like in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it was almost six hundred thousand. So.
Yeah, we're being conservative there.
Okay.
It is possible that in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, that was the actual revenue that we received, which could have been assessments from prior years. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why, um, the five seventy five is a, uh, three year average. Middle of the road with it.
Thank you.
Sometimes when we're not sure, I'm glad brought that, Karen brought that three year average up. A lot of times when you're not, that's a, that's usually a pretty good indicator. You just will roll a three year average in there and go with that because, especially when you're in kind of unusual chartered territory, uncharted territory where we are right now with some of these, especially with our businesses. I would rather be, and Karen feels the same way, and city manager before me, Marty Corcoran, felt the same way. We'd rather be conservative on our estimates on revenue. The last thing you want to be is overly optimistic and then find out you don't have enough money to pay for something.
We, we still don't see a, uh, the windfall from, uh, increased real estate property taxes because we, we end up having to roll back our rates per Hancock.
Correct. So assessments, that's an excellent point, Mayor Greenberg. So even if your assessments are going up, we're essentially rolling our rates back. Most of your property tax goes to the, the school and the other taxing entities. We roll ours back.
And just as a note, um, these are obviously revenue projections based upon what we think is the best estimate. Based upon, you know, history and kind of what's happening right now with all the information that we have available. But Anthony does a really good job and Marty always did a really good job of watching the revenues to see if they're coming in at a given time at the point that we need them to in order to meet budget. If, if we don't, then obviously the money's not spent because it's not there. So, um, just in case, you know, there was a question, this, the budget is a breathing document. You know, it, yes, it's a projection, you know, for what we think is going to happen. But throughout the fiscal year, it's kind of a living, breathing document that, that has, um, actual money and figures associated with it. So if it doesn't come in, obviously we don't spend it just because, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean you can have it if we don't have the money for it. So, um, and like I said, Anthony does a really good job of staying on top of that and Marty always did, um, as well. So just in case there was any question.
Thank you for that. I, I had a question just sort of about totals as compared to like the one page operating budget sheet. So all, all the, so all the numbers on the one page operating budget sheet are everything that we, they're all the estimates we did for every year. They're none of those numbers seem to be updated with actual. Is that accurate? Cause they
Oh, the operating budget does. I see what she's saying. It's you've got budget, 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 budget.
So those, those numbers at the bottom are all the actual amounts, the grand total are, those are, except for, I'm guessing, two thousand nineteen, twenty. The first three are the actual amounts we.
Yeah, we need to change sixteen, seventeen, or pardon me, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, those are actuals.
But those, the, the actual, what's listed in our current one for eighteen nineteen is the same number that was listed in eighteen nineteen for, in last year's summary sheet.
Yeah, which would have been budgeted.
I think Anthony, that these are budgeted numbers.
Oh, I apologize.
I think that, I apologize. Marty set up this spreadsheet and I'm learning how to work within all these documents that he's had. And, um, I think that these are budgeted, the numbers that he had budgeted for the, the prior years. Budgets over the.
And so then I guess, so then the numbers that are in this revenue sheet that we're looking at now, the first three then are, are updated with what we actually spent. I mean, are what we actually got. Yes. But then these are, so I'm trying to piece together what we got and what we spent or what we budgeted. No, what we got and what we actually spent in that year. And so I, it's like you can't do it with these because they don't.
You want the operating budget sheet to actually have actuals for the first three columns and not the last two.
That, that would be helpful so that you, we can sort of idea of, because I know we budget a lot, but then we don't actually spend it sometimes. So it'd be just helpful to see where we end, the end of a year.
Yeah. And if you wanted to put the actual after the budgeted numbers for those years, that might be interesting too, to see how historically we've, uh, you know, we fared with regards to meeting, you know, the budgetary requirements.
Karen, you know if there's a reason you didn't put actuals there?
I have no idea.
Has nothing yet. To me that, uh, Councilmember Schmidt, yeah, I'm sorry, you, honestly, I assumed it was a typo because I don't know why we wouldn't do that. Well.
Yeah, I can change it.
Yeah, I would appreciate that change for the three columns, but I also like Barry's suggestion of having seeing the actual hand estimates for those.
We can get that for you separately, but for the budgeting purposes, we'll try to keep all these the same, but we can get that for you separately.
That'd be awesome.
Karen adding a couple extra sheets. We can even create like a, you know, like a, a, a council budget. So you can see that just for your, you know, for, for budgeting, for your policy decisions. We'll try to keep all of our, that's why I don't understand why this one is different. Every other column has the three actuals and then the budget, the budget. So we can change that.
We not add additional front matter into the budget?
Could you say that again?
All right. Can we not ultimately add additional front matter into the budget? You know, like the, which Karen said wouldn't be in this one, that like pretty graph, in the pretty graphs and stuff like that, we can add a table.
The one we're going to turn our budget award in for, we can, we can play with that however we want. Although Karen's probably got some specific guidelines we've got to meet.
I have a whole book with specific guidelines. We have to.
Finance people always have to have special booklets.
We're special, you know that.
Just so you know, in case anyone is interested, there are budget to actual breakdowns, um, in our CAFER for every fiscal year. Um, you know, it's in the RSI, I'm sorry, the required supplementary information. But it, it is in there. The larger funds are obviously first, uh, the ones that they really care about. The smaller ones like SPD and stuff like that, that don't see as much activity or bring as much revenue, um, those are a little further in the back. But, but it is, it's in there. It's scattered throughout the CAFER for any given fiscal year, if you want to see it now.
Okay. Although I think, um, I guess we get sent that every year, but I don't think that's online. So it, it would be just whatever I've received. Those are the years I could. Thinking too ahead, and if it's going to be in the budget, that'll be helpful. But if we have, I think it'd be helpful too for the public to see that sort of thing. And I think we only have one CAFER online, right? Is it not?
No, I know that the policy was to update the, uh, website every year with the current budgets and the CAFER through the end of the previous fiscal year. So if it's not, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
No, I think we, we did, um, back on that and Laura was able to get the last five of the ETO.
Oh, she put them on there? Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you.
Do we get?
Do you have on the CAFER? I just want to make sure. Meeting your guys, uh, making sure we, we do what you want. The CAFER, Councilmember reporting you right now, out there is what you're looking for. The five CAFERS, is that, that's what, is that what you said you wanted?
I was hoping to have the last five of CAFERS and the last five of budgets. And I, I'm pretty sure that Laura was able to get all the others up.
If not, let me know, we'll get it. Old material on there is very easy. We can, we can grab that. So just let me know. Same thing, Councilmember Schmidt, if you see something different, just, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, can I ask about, um, the, uh, the excellence in budgeting, um, award process that you're going through? Does it include anything measuring budget accuracy or forecast accuracy or anything like that?
Um, for the first year, probably no. This will be our initial offering, our initial chance at this. Um, I am a budget reviewer for the GFOA. So, um, there are, that's really more of a, a CAFER thing and not a budget thing. When it comes to our CAFER, our financial statements at the end of the year, they want to see how accurate we were. As long as we can, uh, justify why we think things are as they are. Because the budget is a projection and that's what they're looking at. They're not really looking to see how close were you? They want to, I don't even look at other people's CAFERS when I review their budgets. Um, you know, we just, we look at their, at their charts. So they have a chart like, like we have with the five years, um, you know, with the three that are actual and then, you know, the, the projected. And, um, you know, you kind of glance through it, but if there's an anomaly and they can explain it, such as COVID nineteen, or we had a major store close or something like that, you, you just kind of move on from that. So, um, to answer your question, really no, um, not, not specifically. Does that help?
Yeah, so maybe, um, I might not be asking the question the right way. So maybe it's more of a question of, is there, maybe not the budget accuracy, but when it comes to, um, working within your budget and working within, as you mentioned, if we don't have the money, we don't spend it. Is there a measurement out there for cities who do a really good job at it versus cities who don't do such a good job and get themselves, dig themselves into a hole?
Um, yes, it's this award. Distinguished Budget Award. If you, um, if you dig yourself into a hole, you surely don't want to present that budget to anybody. Cause that's embarrassing. So, um, you know, and once you, once you start getting an award like this, like with the CAFER award, if you stop, people notice, like the rating agencies or investors, or you know, if we wanted to, to issue bonds again or something like that, people would question it and they would want to know why.
And, and that, Councilmember Schmidt, that's why, and I know I talked, I think I was just talking with Councilmember Schmidt about it last week. That's why I said, you know, it's, I'm not going to be doing this. Karen will be doing this and Karen will always want to get this award. I won't be. Whoever you hire kind of sets the table that they need to make sure to keep this standard. And if they don't, then you've, you've got questions to walk. But this is, this will ensure that, uh, best practices in, in, in budgeting are, are being followed for the city for years to come. There's really no reason they should not be able to get this award every year.
I, so Eleanor, I don't know if you, or if anyone knows, so I, where, where on our website is the funny stuff? Because I always just click on, and, and I noticed there was sixteen thousand in the budget for the website. Was that accurate? So maybe that will help with some of this because I often have trouble finding stuff.
Laura Miller is not, Laura Miller is not happy with the, the website. I'm not. And so she's, she's doing an upgrade. I, I actually liked our prior, um, operating system or, or browsing system before we did this most recent update, which was a few years ago. I, I agree with you, Councilmember Schmidt. I'm not happy with it and, and Laura wasn't, so we are changing that.
We're not changing.
We're going to just basically change the way the budget's presented and how you're going to operate and move through the budget. Or pardon me, not the budget, the website. I'm sorry.
Um, but if you go, if you click on government. Just the opening.
Oh, just so it's not one. Oh, okay. So I because I noticed on a lot of other city websites, they say like city finances or so you know what's in that. I just, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I don't like how the, I mean, if you if you click over into um departments. Now, if you if you if you scroll off parks, sometimes it'll shoot up. And so the way that they've, the way that it, again, the way you navigate through this website to me is um somewhat confusing.
The search engine is worthless.
Thank you, Barry.
Well, that's good. We have it in the budget then to update it. That will be, we'll all be excited by that.
If a resident asks me a question, I should be able to find it pretty quickly. And I have to admit, sometimes I'm kind of embarrassed because I'm time and I've got him on the phone trying to find something. So.
Yeah.
I was glad when Laura said she wants to change that. She will absolutely be working at this year.
Awesome. And thank you, Eleanor, for the direction.
You'll be getting those. You should be getting those and I'll we'll we'll start producing those right now with this budget and with everything else. We haven't put that out, but we will because we're going through the budget. Starting next fiscal year, you'll be getting quarterly updates.
And this is going on the somehow available for the public tomorrow, is that right?
Yes. It'll go out in your city council packet. And we'll put it out, put it out with that councilmember party. And 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 in in the copy you guys will get will have um the or the yellow shaded, kind of like I had in my twenty four hundred account showing moved uh the 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 city hall or old fire station reconstruction money off into the uh police fire tax, the forty one account. So that or forty account, that's what you'll see on your copies. Uh, the the public's copy will just be, you know. There won't be any shading or any highlighting on that.
So just a note before this goes out about the um typos essentially, the um estimate fiscal year nineteen twenty. As you scroll down farther into the spreadsheet, you'll notice it says eighteen nineteen.
Thanks, Sandy.
Yep.
I actually. I actually circled that.
Before it goes public.
I tell you. Yeah, we'll definitely get that. Thank you so much. And he does that all the way down.
Yeah.
Can I ask you about one? Final item that I've been thinking about um that's that's come up, the um the idea that we, I think that our latest community survey indicates that twenty percent of our households in Maplewood have no internet access. And um the internet, I think this, the online learning has highlighted how access is um an issue, but it's an issue that goes well beyond just our our kids and our families connected to schools because we, you know, anybody on a you know, fixed income, some of our seniors may not have as much access. And I was wondering if um, since it's a bigger systems problem than just a a school's problem, I was wondering if we could think about um like partnering with our school district to help pay for hotspots.
Yeah, I I talked with uh Ed Rich over at the school district and he talked to the board with regards to. I was trying to see if we could get uh internet access for some of our seniors. And the program that they have will not, they can't do that through that particular program. Uh, the technology obviously is there, but uh I'm not sure what the impediments are. But uh, yeah, I I definitely agree with you that uh, you know, the students aren't aren't the only uh residents uh of Maplewood that need internet access, especially right now.
Yeah.
So we had previously just, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say another regional response team is thinking a lot about this kind of thing and um, it, you know, it's a bigger system wide regional problem and um you know, that I I hope that we could consider contributing toward in investing in that um in partnership with other places.
So I know one thing that we had talked about previously and I'd actually talked about with Marty before he left was, you know, the idea of citywide, you know, internet access and you know, the last time he looked at it, it was astronomical, but it was also like fifteen years ago. Um, and then I spoke with it, I spoke with um Dr. Hall and then I think some school board members when we had our dinner with them. And, you know, because I thought that would be an issue there and it seemed like they sort of had their own solution to that. So, I mean, I don't know if it's you know, who or how to look into seeing just sort of what the cost is of doing something like that now. Um, fifteen years later that the internet's so much more prevalent. Um.
I could, we could look into that. I mean,
Okay.
the only city that's done this. I haven't, I I I think I was here when they did look into that many, many years ago and it was.
A lot.
That that was when internet, you know, that was when you still had a landline, you know, you dialed it. A long time ago, we looked into that. So.
When I I even wondered, when I researched it, there were fairly a large number of smaller towns and cities that had it that offer it. And so I didn't know if maybe some sort of grant program out there or, you know, if you show we have a high number of seniors that need it, things like that, maybe that could.
When I was in Columbia, it's been years since I was in Columbia. We added them in all of our parks. We added them outside of library and in some areas in our business district and it, I'm not saying it's cheap, but it wasn't.
Okay.
Astronomical. Maplewood is a mile and a half square.
Right.
Uh, Columbia was eleven miles, you know, it was a little, you know, so I mean, I'll look into that. I'm not, I I wish I could give you a a good, a good answer. If it's reasonable, I don't know, but we'll look into it.
That'd be great.
I've I've talked with Charter on many occasions about their sub uh subsidy program for seniors and uh the seniors that I've talked to that have tried to uh enroll in the program weren't. Yeah, I'm not sure what the exact details were, but they they weren't happy with it. It it seems like uh with uh cable revenues going down uh that they should and the fact that they can put. It appears that they can put towers any place that they want. I know that Kansas City as a as a city, in exchange for being able to put towers wherever they want, the whole city of Kansas City has internet access. So I don't, I don't know how that works. Uh, how that's negotiated with them, but uh you know, yeah, it's it's something worth looking into.
You know, what's really interesting is we've talked about, we talk about block grants, the whole idea of the block grant. Is it supposed to, you know, essentially be for uh underserved or or basically people that don't have the the means? We were talking about the home improvement, which is why I like it because it's based on on your income and not necessarily the neighborhood or the block you happen to live in. And we talked about the utility assistance program. Doesn't even hurt to ask them if they could maybe somehow if they've ever thought of considering uh internet access because it's something I didn't until Laura brought it up. I think I don't know that you could get a better use if somebody doesn't have the means to have internet access and they have a child, yet they can't connect like everybody, every other child does or the majority of the other children do. And we could, we could approach the county and ask them that as well. Hey, can, have you ever thought about providing internet access for people that qualify based on income? I think that'd be a fantastic.
That'd be great.
I have a great idea. Maybe it could be another way that if municipalities got CARES Act money, that things like that could be on the table. Um, but there, I mean, there is this, I think there's a sub team of the regional response that has been doing a lot of research on this and maybe we could connect with them about what they have found and uh what they know about what state and federal funds might be available. But I wanted to bring it up because it's something that I don't think we did it for.
But you know, it's not, doesn't mean we can't do an amendment and, you know, if something comes up, you can always pass an ordinance and just because you didn't think of it now, doesn't mean you gotta wait a year. Um. You mentioned CARES Act. County executive is has made, has mentioned that the your forty seven million he's talked about, you know, for law enforcement if if need be, which would be we obviously didn't put anything in the revenue because I know I'm never going to count on revenue until somebody says, until it's in, actually in my accountant, Karen tells me we have it, but that's another possible source of revenue. We'd we'd love to see come in and I mentioned that that would be a good way to reach out to smaller municipalities as opposed to just municipalities five thousand and more or government agencies. So that was the number uh we were given is forty seven million. We'll see because, you know, he's still waiting to make sure it meets the qualifications and the requirements, but um hopefully that that comes to fruition. We could use some of that revenue like every city could.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly, if you look at what the CARES Act funds can be spent on, there's certainly like a wide variety of COVID related. Uh, well beyond public safety and law enforcement that um that I think would be direct aid to residents right now and and where they're going to be hurting. So I think, you know, keeping an eye on what goes on with that and then what the the possibilities are for.
We are. And um, we talked earlier about businesses and one of the unfortunate things is, you know, there's a lot of, you know, and it makes sense anytime there's federal money involved, there should be obviously accounting, but initially the business owners were kind of mentioned, they they didn't think there was going to be quite as much paperwork required. And and I I guess from a financial standpoint and documentation standpoint, to get those small business loans. It's it's Laura Miller's told me it's becoming more cumbersome or it's more cumbersome than a lot of these small businesses thought. The thing that's that's kind of sad about that is sometimes the smaller the business, the less likely they are have to have like a Karen Bilber or CPA or an accountant that can get that information. You know, the bigger businesses typically have, you know, a finance department. And so Laura said some of the business owners have essentially kind of wrote that money off unfortunately, but she's still working with them wherever she can. I think that was seventeen million they allocated for that across the county. Does anyone else have any questions on, I guess, revenues or are we okay to move to operating budget? It's just more of a summary sheet, just to show you where we are at. As councilmember Schmidt brought up, we can change those first three columns. First, we can change those to actuals. Our general revenue, you can see it's gone down significantly, our general revenue expenses. And everybody, every department I said earlier is actually uh seen a reduction from the prior year. So um that's pretty self explanatory. These are basically just the sum totals of all the funds we've already gone over. Does anyone have any questions on this sheet?
How many new positions are included in the upcoming budget?
Uh, none. Um, replacement positions, yes, but we're not creating any new, any new positions. At least there's no funding for them. I think that Karen, you might want to correct me if I'm wrong. I think the the fire department initially put in an assistant chief, but they they didn't put any money in there for them. They're just trying to put the placeholder in there.
Correct. Fire sales tax account.
Yeah, am I missing anything? We've moved employees from one account to the other, but we're not creating any new positions. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
How many positions are vacant right now?
Anthony?
Um, thinking.
With the vacancies.
Yeah, I'm I'm the department with the all of them. I've got two and then uh the city manager is three. I think that's it. I I don't think, I think we're we're caught up on police, which is a rarity, and I think we're caught up on fire. I bear I'd have to kind of go through each line item, but I believe three.
Okay.
You guys are moving on the city manager now. And we'll work on the others. One of my uh, one of my employees, there it's a it's kind of a, it's a, it's a, it's potential retirement. And so I'm not sure right now. So we're waiting. He's he's essentially still employed, but um I don't believe he's coming back.
How many people are currently still on furlough?
Four.
Okay, is there a return date for them?
No, because we're talking of jail. Um. And then and then court related. And so I, most of those are court related. One of them is a another one of my employees um who schedules inspections. But I would say we're probably at about half of our daily traffic. I think the last time I talked to you, we were at about a third. We're still getting a lot of people in. And I'm not going to bring somebody back unless I have a full workload. We're basically shifting duties and responsibilities. I mentioned we're short on public works employees, but I've moved one of my building inspectors, the public works full time. Maybe six, six, seven weeks ago to make up that difference. Again, we're we're shifting resources as best as we can. I'm not going to bring somebody back if I don't have the work for them. But I anticipate we'll probably be at four for at least the next four weeks, Barry, Mayor Greenberg, and maybe even longer.
Uh, we're still paying uh benefits though, right?
We're paying our portion of healthcare. Um, there's an employee, there's an employee portion. Karen can explain it a little bit better that that is in addition that we'll pay. We're making those employees pay that portion. Karen, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, we um, we cover employee only um coverage a hundred percent. And then at the different levels, we cover different percentages. Um, the employee would typically have that portion payroll deducted, but since we're not paying them, we can't have them payroll deducted. So uh they've, any, any employee who has a coverage level that's not employee only has been notified that they need to remit their portion to the city. Um, and I've made it by the end of a given month because if they come back to work in that month, then obviously they're not going to pay us for that month. So.
Okay.
What would be the, just related to that, what would be the cost to the city if we decided to cover that portion, the employee portion?
Um.
And relatively, I mean.
For the four employees or for all the employees?
For the 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 four that are furloughed. So just the furloughed employees.
Um.
Well.
We have others furloughed that are already back.
I'm sorry, what did you say, councilmember?
Others previously furloughed that are already back.
My part, my part time and my part time summer help.
No, but they don't get help.
We basically brought, we basically rehired summer help because I'm paying them like ten, ten, twenty five an hour and no benefits. And I previously had had a member, I mentioned we'd had three part time seasonal people working thirty hours a week. Uh, they were offered, one found a job, we brought two back, but we considered them summer help. So.
I'm wondering if it's the, I appreciate um remember Philip's question, I was wondering if it's four was the max number or if there were others that we should also consider. But.
No, that, no.
Well, I I I don't think that Sandy's question was answered, uh, you know. And I'm curious, asked, what would the cost be to uh uh, you know, to pay uh, to pay those benefits for those four? Uh, you know, cover more of of their expenses.
Right. The reason I ask
I can tell you.
Company is doing while they're, there's um almost sixty percent of my department is being furloughed starting tomorrow. And the my company is paying the employee portion of the health insurance while they're being furloughed for three months. And I thought that was a it's an incredible gesture of the company to do that for, you know, for so many employees. So I thought if that's something that we can do.
We we are paying the employee.
They are, yeah. This is for family, right?
Yes, this is a.
For like spouses or kids.
And we're not talking a significant amount. The vast majority of it is we are paying for. I, we can get you the, I mean, those numbers, Karen, they were pretty insignificant. I, we can get you the, I mean, those numbers, Karen, they were pretty insignificant, weren't they?
Yeah, so I'm, I was trying to pull up my spreadsheet, uh, which I did. So the person who has the highest level of coverage, we have one person who has employee family coverage. And on a monthly basis, they pay $648.82. Um, we have a couple of people who have employee child coverage, and on a monthly basis, they pay $163.40. And um, then the employee spouse level, they pay $438.05. And so they're paying for not their coverage. They're paying for their, their family's coverage. Um. And mathematically. Um. The people that we have on furlough, they're making about the same amount of money. Um, through unemployment that they would be making here at um, the city of Maplewood. Um. You know, the only difference is they would have to remit that portion to us instead of having it payroll deducted.
And, and actually, some are making more.
Yeah.
The man.
That's only through July if. If nothing gets extended. So, I mean, if, if there's, if we have an opportunity to, to help those employees that are furloughed. Um, for the, if it's a longer period, or if the, the supplement doesn't, um, you know, doesn't happen, if that's something that we could explore, I, I'd. Like to hear about it.
I agree.
Anyone have any other questions on the, on maybe on the some, on the operating budget some sheet? All right.
The, the swimming pool. Uh. Let's see, we know what the bonds are as far as the uh. You know, we talked about uh incurring ex, expenses that were probably going to be even more negative than we. And we typically are. Uh. But uh, have, have those numbers been considered uh as part of this budget?
They have. Okay. Seeing in that summary right there is essentially, that is your pool bonds.
Well, not the pool bonds, but the uh, the swimming pool.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have, we have considered that.
Okay.
Anderson.
No, that's the bond amount. That's, that's going to be our payment. And uh, Karen, have we made the June payment this year yet?
Uh, yes, it was due in May.
May, okay. So.
No, this is related.
Next year.
There's two line items.
Like the amount that we pay for, to, you know, this is related to opening the, the.
Is that the one just called swimming pool, not swimming pool bonds? Yes.
So the parks and recreation went up significantly. Uh, $300,000.
Uh, $400,000. Oh, no, I can't, all right, that was, that was in the uh. I'll pull that account out, Barry. In a while, because I've looked at Parks and Rec.
A lot of that is the salary that we shift from. Over.
Okay, I.
Moved about.
I see what you're saying.
Probably about 400 and um, we moved about 150,000 out of Public Works and the General Fund down into that account.
Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
Um. There were just. There were two, like the police and the fire, the numbers that are in the, of the summary sheet are just. A bit different from. When we went through, but I think you said that was going to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're a little bit different from when we covered those.
Well, we made, yeah, we've made some changes since, and you will see that again highlighted as, as.
Okay.
Um. That's why I like doing these capital accounts later, because you've been always. Borrow off, you know, essentially utilize capital funds for some operating costs. And that's why I wanted to get the department budgets out of the way early. And then we've made changes based on. Our projections and just other things that have come up since that. I think we probably started this process and. If I remember correctly, it was early April, so things have. That's, that's where you'll see some minor changes. But again, Councilmember Pardini. The next budget, you, the budget tomorrow, it should all light up, and you'll, you'll see what we've moved. Well, I've got everyone. I guess the, the, we had some, I guess the National Guard is out on our lot, or at least they were. 20 minutes ago. I don't know what that's about, but I'll go find out after this. I'm, I'm at City Hall right now.
They're at City Hall on the lot?
Yeah, he said, uh, you know. I'm at, I'll go walk out after the meeting and update you. If it's anything of any importance, I'll send an email out.
So. We, we know that, that Brett Wood, uh, Promenade had. Uh. Had demonstrations today. Uh. Are we aware of anything else? That's happened?
No, sir.
Okay.
Can I go back to budget real quick? Um, we talked about uh, given the timing, so we can get this done in time to. Doing, like, trying to have another, a time where the public could comment besides this Tuesday, since they're, the budget's just coming out. So I just wanted to follow up on that and see about that. If there's a day in, in the week in between, like the Tuesday in between, that we could just offer like an hour or so for people. In the public to ask us questions or share their thoughts. Because otherwise, they basically have two days to look at a, you know, 100 and something page document. Um. To see what questions they may have.
So um, I want to make sure I, I, I get your concern. Are we talking maybe um, the typical, like the. Stay on the day schedule? So that would be Tuesday, uh, June 16th is what you're thinking about having a, just a budget, we just call it maybe a, a budget discussion meeting?
Yeah, and just for the public to ask any questions they have or express any concerns, just so, because otherwise, they, they have this Tuesday, which. Isn't a lot of time.
We can meet as often as you want. Uh, if, if you guys want to, you know, we can schedule now, like, we could, we could put it down for the 16th, and then. I'd still give you additional days afterwards if, if there's still questions. I, I can't foresee many, but um. I think that's a, a good idea.
And so does that, I mean, that works for me. I don't know if that works for everyone else, or if there's a better day. I just wanted to bring it up now, because I know. Um, so we don't get too close to it.
Make sure, we're, we're talking the 16th, let's say 16th.
Or whatever, that's fine for me. Whatever time works for everybody. Um, that works for me.
That's fine with me.
That's fine with me.
Feel like if, if the 7:30 works for people, I still think that could be easier for. Anybody, like, for a lot of people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have kids, you can put them to sleep or get them, yeah.
Yeah, 6 o'clock's dinnertime for a lot of people.
Yeah.
With kids and stuff. They don't like to eat too late, so.
Okay, so I'm hearing uh. What, plan on it, unless, unless something changes, we'll plan on having a, I'll just schedule a, called a budget work session. And I'll just probably label it open discussion about uh, the fiscal year budget, and that'll be for the 16th at 7:30.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, does anyone else have any questions for any item we reviewed tonight? Okay.
If that's.
If that, I'll get it, Karen and I'll be um. Updating everything, and, and it'll be going out along with uh, with the regular council packet. Um. Not a, not a, not a lot of interest. It'll be a relatively short meeting for anyone that's worrying. So, you know, you should have plenty of time, and there really is very little difference. What you'll be getting in this budget document from what we haven't already gone through in the last two months. So, um. If it's okay, we'll go ahead and end the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All those in favor? Hi.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everyone have a good weekend, and I will talk to everyone next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen. Okay, bye-bye.